Work this morning, I was on a Google conference call.
Hi, thank you.
Well, do you guys really need to look at me?
No.
All right, well.
We've started recording, so you're all set to start the meeting.
Okay. Let me call up my agenda here, hang on please.
Meeting agenda?
I have a total.
I have agenda, I should have to find it.
All right. Which one of these is it?
A couple of minutes. Minutes, I'm all set.
Minutes, but where did my agenda go? I think so now, I'm told that I didn't judge it on that.
Oh, where is my agenda?
Oh, it's the other side of this. Never mind, yes.
Well, David, if you just want us to give you the agenda item, we can call the meeting to order and start in on the board organization.
Okay, ah, I have it now, thank you.
Oh, he's got it.
Okay, so, we are, I am calling this meeting to order at 7:04. This is the Enfield Planning Board, it is May 25th, 2022. And I'm in my kitchen, and I suppose everybody else is in the DPW conference room. First order of business is, we have to do an organizational meeting, because it's a new year. Every year after town meeting, we do, we reorganize.
One thing first, David, Stan, you need to appoint Jim as an alternate to stand for Eric. To take Eric's place. He's mute, you're mute, David. Did he all of a sudden go on mute? Yeah, I didn't mute him.
Okay. Dan, who are you suggesting be elevated from an alternate to a full meeting?
Full Jim membership.
Jim, okay, Jim, you have been elevated to full membership tonight. Thank you for volunteering. So, first order of business is to elect a chairperson for the coming year. Nominations are open.
Dan, I'll nominate Dave Frack.
I was just going to say, can we nominate our current one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I second that.
Okay, we have a nomination and a second. David Frack.
Dominations for chairman.
All right, nominations are closed, all in favor of David Frack as chairperson, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, David Frack is elected chairperson. Second order of business is vice chair. The nominations are open.
Who's the first vice chair?
Eric. Eric is, but now he's on the select board, so he can't be vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Dan.
I knew what was happening.
I did too.
I'll second that.
All right. Are there any other nominations for vice chair?
If you want to get out of this.
Our new nomination ceases.
Then we'll have a vote. All in favor of Dan Kylie as vice chair, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstention. Dan's going to say.
Dan, congratulations, you're vice chair. In the past, we have elected a secretary. And that position has sort of become obsolete, because we have a professional minute staker, who is in charge of doing all of our minutes work. We can either elect a secretary, or we can just pass over that office as something that we don't need anymore. Does anyone have any opinion on what the board should do?
I just want to, I just want to bring up, the only point I would agree that a secretary position is helpful is when the chair and the vice chair are not able to attend a meeting. And if we still have a quarrel, we have someone that can at least officially call the meeting to order.
Okay.
I nominate Phil Vermeer.
All right, so Phil Vermeer has been nominated for secretary, do I hear a second? All right.
Yeah, he did, Linda did.
All right, Phil has been nominated and seconded, are there any other nominations for secretary? Hearing none, we will close nominations and vote. All in favor of Phil Vermeer for secretary, indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? I can't hear anything, guys.
There isn't any. It was unanimous.
It was unanimous, okay. Phil is our secretary. The other thing that we do every year is we go over the policies and procedures manual. And I believe Rob sent that out to everybody a week or two ago. Are there any changes that are in order?
I didn't see anything.
No?
I didn't see any, David.
Okay, so. That being the case, I will entertain a motion to readopt the policies and procedures manual as it existed in the previous year. Do I have a motion? Motion, no, I didn't make the motion, I just asked for the motion.
You got them.
Okay, we got them, okay, all in favor of readopting the policies and procedures manual, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions, okay? We again have the policies and procedures manual, or document, whatever we call. And we'll get on to the next order of business, which is review of minutes. And at this point, just to explain, I had some surgery on Monday, and I'm kind of recovering and probably not operating on all eight cylinders. So I'd like to ask Dan to chair the rest of the meeting for me. Will you do that, Dan?
I can do that.
Okay, in that case, Dan, you are in charge of chairing the meeting, and I will just kind of sit here and be a member.
Okay, let's go.
Thanks, Dan.
Public comment, anybody here who is not on the agenda? Seeing none? Select board report.
Hi all, Kate Plumlee Stewart, if you don't know me. So, we met last on May 13th, I believe, no, sorry, May 16th. And business fire department equipment was surplus, we put it up on GovDeals for Action, that auction was already finalized, I didn't watch the final numbers, but sure, we'll get that in the next town manager's report. The big focus of the meeting was kicking off the invasive species inventory and management plan. And this is a rather large project that covers invasive species in the town. So, I think everybody's probably seen the Japanese knotweed, and that is one of the big focuses. We are pretty much the pilot community for New Hampshire, this has not been done on a broad scale. And they'll also be inviting homeowners to a couple, at least a couple forums, to give them tools and access to information, so that they can also learn how to control invasive species on their own property. A major concern remains how much comes in from the state on the state flowers and different projects. So, you know, this is a, this is a long-term project, it's never going to be all gone. So, we're talking about controlling it, mitigating it, and keeping Enfield's recreation and home and land values. It's something, it's going to be interesting, it's going to be a learning process, and I just ask everybody to be open-minded. Ask your questions, come to the meetings, and, you know, I think there are, many of us have invasive species on our property, so do what we can do. Hailing bid was proposed, and it was unanimous, so, let's see, we've got ability funding discussion approval was the other really big item. And the discussion on how we are going to bond out, and it turns out the bond bank is projecting a larger number than we were looking at originally for a percentage. So we talked with our folks at Mascoma Bank, who funds large bond projects here. They only fund on a 20-year basis, and so they don't fund out 30, so what you do is a 20-year fix, and then you can refi as needed. That's going to do two things for us, and I want everybody to hear this, because it's a little bit confusing. Certainly watch the meeting, this section, for a better explanation, but the basic explanation is, we can only borrow a certain amount. If we borrow all of the money and bond it out, we also disqualify ourselves from some federal funding. What we are doing is we are breaking the funding on the two projects that passed a town meeting into multiple parts, we are bonding a section. Now, because you never need all of the money upfront, right, it's not like, hey, we started, give us next million dollars. So we are doing that, and that will leave us latitude to apply for these large quantity of federal funds that are becoming available. So, and I want to say that Ed would be happy to answer all of your questions on the technicalities of this matter. I'm no expert, but it was, you know, it's a hard, it's always a hard decision when you're looking at finance, what the best way to go is. Mascoma was, is giving us a lower rate than what the bond bank projected at their bond sale. So, I think it makes a lot of sense, it's always a gamble at the end of the day. It's like when you go for a mortgage, do you pay to fix it now, later? So, but we, I think Ed has done his due diligence and done a nice presentation, so if anyone has questions, they go to him. We got some very nice donations, and we appointed a bunch of folks to committees. One of the things the select board has done, together with, at our town manager, is we have changed how we talk about and how we approach membership on committees, is that instead of having like willy-nilly, we have to go find our friends, neighbors, and just ask everybody, which is totally fine, and I want you to continue to do that, we have started making a rolling list. And so, while it feels like there are a lot of openings, it's because we really hadn't kept a rolling list in the past. And people are always in flux on committees, so I don't want there to be panic, it's not like there was a mass. But we also really want people and new ideas, right, we have a lot of really smart, awesome people in this town, who might have been a good person. So if you could keep, if they come out, and invite your friends and neighbors to have a seat at the table with us, right? So that's my other bit, and municipal facilities advisory committee, part deux, took off. And those appointments were made and reaffirmed after non-public. I, because we've had a very busy week, two weeks in the town office, I'm not sure if everybody has been spoken with, who is appointed and not appointed. But I will tell you, there were 21 applicants, and they were all very high-quality, wonderful people, really hard decision. And I, the municipal facilities advisory committee, part deux. And this is a design committee, in the sense that it is going to design the RFQ. We are going to go out with an RFQ instead of an RFP, as part of the, and Ed has some explanations on why, but I think it was a very good start. And these folks will help design that, instead of just having one person. So, and then anybody who didn't happen to get selected, I have my eye on them, for some of these committees. So, very long, but lots of great stuff going on, and would really love, love your help filling out some of these spots that are going to be open. That's it. And Dan is the best for filling in for everybody. Welcome back, Dan.
Okay, review and approval of meeting minutes, let's start with the April 13th meeting. Anybody need a copy? I've got copies. Anybody want to make a motion to put them on the floor?
Make a motion to accept the April, which date?
April 13th.
13th minutes as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Whatever it's worth. I don't think any of us here who were at that meeting were expecting a letter from you afterwards, so I think you made a good decision there.
Yeah.
As far as I know, it wasn't ever even thought of.
Yeah, I know what you're talking, yeah. And our other reasoning was, it was pretty late at that point, all of a sudden, so. We got you on the committee instead.
Much better. That's the one way to get people here.
Let's not make a habit of doing that.
Any relative to the, to the minutes now? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, those pass. Appears to be seven zip. Let's move on to April 27th minutes. Could I get a motion on the floor?
Make a motion to put equal 27th minutes on the floor for discussion?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the accepting the April 27th minutes? Indicate by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm going to abstain, because, oh, it wasn't there.
Yeah, I was like, I was like, I'm not, wasn't there, I'm also abstaining.
Okay. So, 5-0-2.
And we're showing you, oh no, you, you're wasting.
I was not there.
No, no, I mean.
Yeah, I wasn't there, but I sent a risen select board report.
Yeah.
You can't get away from me, even if I'm not there.
Okay, moving on to hearings, we have no hearings, conceptual. Let's start with the Dr. Greg Baker one, because Nicole's not here either. I'm sorry, hi Nicole!
She's right behind that chair!
I do have a real quick update, Dr. Baker actually called me and said he wasn't ready yet for a meeting, so.
Right.
Apologizes, and hopefully he'll be back for a future meeting. So, it does look like we'll see a fairly busy second meeting in June. Site plan review coming up for the Jim Kelleher project at Main Street.
Okay. Nicole, hi Nicole, come on up.
Hello, everybody.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Once she's done with it, she can probably just sign off to be off.
Rob, did you get a chance to print the waiver that I sent to you and distribute that? Or, I dropped it off, did you get to just make copies and distribute that?
I've got it here somewhere, hold on a second.
I realized that I probably should have made four copies after I had already left Staples.
Yeah. Hang on, I'm sure it's here somewhere, in the folder.
If not, I can just come to the next meeting, it's fine.
So, explain to them what you're looking for.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so we had discussed it a little bit when I was here the last time, about not having the site map done by an engineer, because what I'm doing is not really a huge thing, and just doing a detailed site sketch instead. So I had written that up and dropped it off with Rob.
So this will be presented at the time of your site plan review?
Got you.
Right.
Okay, yeah, we can approve it at that point.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
No, so I mean, any other logistical things that you want to talk, this is a good time to do it. When you come in with a formal application for site plan review.
Yeah, okay.
That document that you brought, we'll go with that as a written. Because that, at the time of site plan review, you do, we do require written.
Right.
Requests for waivers.
Yeah.
So, any other things that you want to talk about? We obviously, you guys have seen, we've got the Bog Road gravel pit reclamation plan, I think you guys have all seen that.
Yeah.
Are you working on that now, is there a excavator?
Slowly, slowly, it's, it's almost dry down in the pit, so we're just waiting for everything to dry out before we can really get rolling. But the big loader is getting dropped off on Friday night, so we should be able to like actually get rolling on that, and hopefully things will stop breaking.
Yes, and Nicole also applied for and was granted a variance for the use of the camper beyond the six-month and a calendar year, at the most recent ZBA meeting a couple of weeks ago. So they were, at first, kind of, there were some questions as to whether she needed a variance, but we definitely thought that she did, I did. And it came with, came along with me and granted a variance. So, actually, they were more generous than she and I actually put in the application. They gave her the rest of this year and all of next year to get her house built.
Great.
So, of course, you know, we notified neighbors, and there's no objections down there. She does have a septic system and a well. She basically has told us that she wants to get out of the camper as soon as possible, so.
Yeah.
And that's wise, because it can be a little dangerous if you don't manage it well, I'm not trying to put you off, but the rule is there not to be mean, but because.
Oh yeah, for sure, yeah.
And if you run into trouble, you let someone in this town know, people here are nice.
It was, it was a long winter.
Yeah.
Yeah, but anyways, I just wanted to, you know, those, those of you that had come to the site walk at the pit just before I bought it, we had all kind of verbally agreed on the plan, but I just wanted something in writing to outline, you know, okay, this, this, and this needs to be done by this date, you know, just for my files, and so that everybody's on the same page.
On your first waiver request, George mentioned, said, I'm wanting to have the full engineering plans. So now, are you referring to a perimeter, or just the area that you're going to be working in?
Mostly just the area that I'm going to be working in, because I actually do have a perimeter survey from like 2005. Yeah, so, you know, I have that, I can put that in, but it's just, you know.
Yeah, having that in the file would be helpful, but I'm just, depending on who does the drawing, just make sure that it's done to scale. So if I can, when I take my ruler and I put it on there.
Yeah.
The numbers line up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Other sometimes I've run into problems where people handed in a drawing, and it was popping on the back of a napkin type of. And I pick up my ruler, and it's like nothing matches, and it's like, you know, this is not helpful.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, no, it would definitely, it would be, it would be to scale, yeah.
Yeah, type of thing, so, yeah.
My mom was a designer for a long time, so she's used to doing things to scale back before they had all the computer programs and stuff, so she's going to help me.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah. So yeah, that was my big thing, is just getting the reclamation plan, you know, in writing, because like when I got the special exception for the commercial equine operation, Rob sent me a thing in the mail, you know, signed, accepted. So I just want something like that for the reclamation plan, so that everybody's on the same page.
Yeah.
Do we need to vote on that? Do we need to write it?
No. We're still like conceptual, because we're still at the conceptual point. Until she puts in her plan for.
Well, the reclamation plan is.
The reclamation plan is there, right.
Conceptual, that's, yeah, so that's, that's what I'm.
Already there.
Yeah, so that's what I'm interested in, is just getting that outlined.
Okay.
In writing.
Can we just make a motion that you guys support her reclamation, reclamation plan?
You guys all have seen it, I know you have.
Yeah, somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we outline.
Accept.
Accept. Nicole?
I'm going to say.
Like, uh, Bog Road Reclamation Plan for, for 672 Bog Road. The 672 Bog Road Reclamation.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Think I better, unfamiliar with.
Yeah, okay.
We should get you a copy.
I'll get you a copy, yeah, just so, I mean, I'll give you a quick background. Down on Bog Road, as you probably remember, there was a whole bunch of gravel pits through the years, that was sort of our aggregate material headquarters down there. We had sort of dwindled down to just three active pits in the last five years or so. There's Art Conkey's, that's the big one on the left as you head south, and then the crates pit, and then there was one called Green Links. The crates pit is right on the corner, or was right on the corner of Bear Road, which takes you up to Eastman. Nicole has purchased that, that's about 100 acres, maybe 97, 98. And she's come in for a special exception with the zoning board last year. We did a site visit jointly with planning, she's going to convert the use from a gravel pit to a commercial equestrian. So she got her special exception for that. There was a house there that Sunny, who I think was a friend of the crates, right?
Sunny Bill.
Yes, there was a mobile home right there next to the pit. They, the crates pulled the trailer out, but there was still a septic system and a well. And so Nicole has set up a camper there, because she's now living on site to supervise construction of her barns and her house and everything. And so, she filed, I can get your copy of that, I can make that before we leave tonight, a reclamation plan for the gravel pit. As you know, that's part of the regs for gravel pits, once you're done with it, it needs to be sort of turned back into something that will grow vegetation. So that's a big part of what she's up to nowadays, she's got a contractor hired to, they got to bring in material and try to get seed established and reslope things, and change it from being an active gravel pit to a horse operation. So, so she's got her special exceptions, she's got a variance for her camper, she'll be coming in next for a site plan review for the commercial equestrian operation. She's, you know, she could do, next week is the deadline for the meeting in June, the next meeting in June is available, or July or August.
Yeah, it'll probably be at least the July meeting, I did finally get ahold of a septic designer, though, John Downing is going to do it.
Hey, great.
Yeah.
Great, I mean, it's a big job, it's 100 acres and.
Yeah, so the site plan review is because there's a special exception granted, I mean, had it been a.
Well, it's also a change, it's also a change of use.
Yeah, so if it was, if it was her personal horse.
Right.
No, no, no planning board approvals necessary, but because it is going to be commercial, we require that for the business uses, a review, a site plan review. So, you know, we're going to talk about her parking, lighting, landscaping, hours of operation, sort of the standard stuff that goes into the site plan.
Yeah, because she's not subdividing, she's not creating new lots on a subdivision application, she's taking an existing lot as is, and the chain, or the change of use to a commercial activity, because it's the commercial that triggers, why you have to talk to us.
Like I was saying, and we have two different layers to go, go minor site plan review or major site plan review. It's kind of, I mean, it's in the ordinance, and it's something that I sort of rule on at the front end, whether it's going to be major or minor. Supposed to follow exactly what it says in the ordinance, sometimes there's a little discussion, David, a lot of times helps me figure that out from a, from a perspective of what you guys would sort of go along with. From the sounds of what she's kind of here today, too, is to sort of, the major site plan review is really a high level of scrutiny. I don't know if you were here when Jakes did theirs, so, you know, it's, it's engineering drawings, especially when you talk about fuel and, you know, customers coming to go and stuff, so, you know, the Jakes application is this thick with plans, you know, from Engineering Ventures, I think was the, was the engineering firm. And we require that for major site plan, but for minor, it's more, it's a little bit lower level of scrutiny. I think, sounds like you guys.
This is really just a change of use anyways.
Yeah, it walks the line between major and minor.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you're running like 100 horses and cars all day, then that's a whole different ballgame.
Right, but it's not going to be that.
Yeah, and that's, you know, stuff like that.
Yeah.
That's, but that, that's stuff that'll have to be in what you send us.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, absolutely.
What you, how many you think you're going to have, people going in and out of there every day.
Yeah.
You know, how big, how, how big your barns are going to be and how many horses do you think you're going to have?
Yeah.
All of that.
And I think you indicated to us it's a specialty training that you're offering, right? So it's a more niche type.
Yeah.
Activity.
Yeah.
What kind of training are you going to do?
Um, I work a lot with positive reinforcement and clicker training. So it originated in the marine mammal world, actually, and it's really popular in the dog world now. And it's just starting to hit the horse community. So, um, it's not something that, everybody does or everybody's even really keen on.
So will, will you be, I, I don't know if I use the word right, breaking the horses?
Um, yeah, you know, starting horses is, yeah, that's, that's definitely, you know, something that I do. And a lot of, you know, a lot of clients come to me with behavioral issues with their horses and they end up needing, needing to be restarted. You know, as if they were untrained and they train the behaviors for being ridden and everything.
I'm just curious about, this is a general question about gravel pits. Um, I would have thought the owner of the pit before they could sell it would have had to reclaim it. But that doesn't work that way, or?
It, it, by rights, does work that way, but a part of the sale was that she was gonna do the reclaim.
Yeah, we technically sold it as an active pit. There was, there was just enough material left that could be taken out. That they could still sell it as an active pit. So I knew that coming into it.
In effect, if she, she wanted to, she could file tomorrow and intend to excavate and start pulling gravel out this year.
Sure.
And, and it's, it won't be officially, basically, no longer a gravel pit until she puts it to the next use. So that's basically the litmus test from the state's perspective is.
Right.
Not only do you stop using it like, like you, you were using it, but you actually put it to a different use. So once she starts going in as a, a horse operation, then the gravel pit operation will cease to be.
Right.
An allowed use there.
And the reclamation has to be done prior to the change of use.
Yes.
Yep.
And Nicole has done a really great job of coming in and having these conversations. So, I don't know how many times you've been to us, but I acknowledge that.
At least twice, zoning board at least twice.
Yeah, so.
And changed a lot of headaches.
I absolutely appreciate her. Yeah, like I said, I think, uh, I was, especially on the zoning side, I was like, she's doing what we want people to do.
Right.
I like actually setting an example for people.
Right.
You offer training for humans.
Yes, positive reinforcement.
It is possible.
If you can clicker train them.
She's not coming in, she's not coming in six months later asking for forgiveness.
And I will also say, uh, the, 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 the way that the gravel pit regulations are in the state of New Hampshire, is that they want you to sort of continuously reclaim. And the crates have been doing that. There are sections of that gravel pit that have already been reclaimed and are now growing, you know, saplings this big around. Uh, and so they want you to sort of minimize how much of it is open at any given time. And try to keep, you know, basically preventative measures in place, best practices, so to speak. And I have heard actually from Art Conkey that he's in negotiations to purchase the Green Links pit, which is the one, that actually straddles the border between, uh, Enfield and Springfield.
Yeah.
It's right, it's just, it's south of where Nicole's, uh, property is. And, uh, that one's very similar in that there's, there was some open, but some of it had already been reclaimed as well. Art Conkey has figured out, and if you've been down there, he's figured out, he's got this excavator that, it looks like a, a mutant excavator. Because the bucket and boom are like three times as long as a regular excavator. It's called a long reach. So he can actually dig like seventy feet down, like unlike a regular excavator can maybe go ten or fifteen, you know, so. So he's actually able to extract more material, uh, with that new piece of equipment. That's what he's been doing in his existing pit. I think he'll probably do something at the new pit. But as part of the, the town process, we actually work with the select board. When they file their intent to excavate, which is a tax form, it triggers an inspection from me and my department. We go down and we basically write a report that we file with the select board. The select board has to sort of give it their blessing to, go for another year of, of excavating. And of course, you know, they're supposed to file the, the forms so that, get our tax and get yield tax off of gravel, sand and other materials. But it is kind of a passing of an era. We're down to just one operator at this point. It used to be, I bet there was at, at least a half a dozen different operators on Bog Road at one time.
And then there's one on the bad corner.
Question, does anyone know what formed that gravel pit? Was that an escar there? Anyone know the geography of it?
It must have been something to do with glaciers. I bet it is, yeah.
Yeah, that whole area.
Yeah, or the creek that runs through there that, you know, is the bog off and on was a big river at some point.
Yeah, deposits. What's interesting, when they built the interstate system, they found gravel pits everywhere. I mean, they literally were, yeah, I mean, there was probably a dozen gravel pits in Enfield at one time because of the interstate project.
Yeah.
I know there was a playing field, Lebanon, and it was, that was a massive, massive undertaking. And of course, back then, there was no environmental, so they would like go out in the Connecticut River with a dozer and start pushing material up out of the, up out of the river. They got mess, but that's how they did it.
Okay, is that where?
Yes, I'll work with you.
We're good with you, Nicole.
You're ready to start going, getting your site plan or due plans going?
Yeah.
I will find, I know I've got the, it dropped off.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you so much, Nicole. That's great.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Nicole.
Have a good night.
You too.
You too.
So Dr. Baker's not ready yet?
Dr. Baker's not ready.
Okay.
He's just listed, I don't know if you guys have seen, you want to see something cool, go on Zillow and look at the, uh, Smith Pond, uh, property. You know, he has two properties up there currently. He's got the little cabin on the, on the pond.
Right.
Then he's got what used to be, I think it was Jeff Reed's place.
Yeah.
You just listened to that. It's one point one five mil.
One point.
Yeah, one point three five, sorry.
Oh, you know me.
It's pretty, pretty nice, yeah. It's like eighty, thirty acres?
Really pretty.
Yeah. But it is gonna be a challenge for him, because as you guys know, Smith Pond is un, uh, maintained. It's not a.
Right.
It's not really a town class five road itself. More of a class six, I think, up there where those houses are.
It's gonna happen.
The gate, yeah, the gate on.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, coming up to the gate, it's unmaintained.
That's right.
Beyond that, it's private.
And it is a rough road up there. It's pretty good. Beautiful, beautiful spot.
Yeah.
The Upper Valley Land Trust has amazing trails and all the way down to four A.
Yeah.
And of course, Smith Pond is a treasure. One of my concerns, we started talking with Dr. Baker about it, is he did a lot of upgrades to the dam. But I think he did those at his expense. I'm not sure that the upgrades were on his land.
They were, they were on, uh, Land Trust.
Cobles.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, obviously, it was, it was because he gave it to the Land Trust after.
Okay, yeah.
After he fixed the dam.
Yeah, so the dam is gonna be, is gonna be on them because.
Yeah.
The maintenance. And of course, the state, can't you tell you about this, because state is.
They're on a bend.
They're way, way into dams now. They're, they're gonna be draining Goose Pond.
Yeah.
To fix that dam. That's a manmade dam.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there will be no Goose Pond for a couple of years, I think.
They are really, I mean, they came at us about the George Pond Dam, and I said, if the town takes any responsibility for that, I want to know if that dam was, and that land was deeded to us, because if it was not deeded to us,
Yeah.
And it belongs to the last descendant of some bill person, we do not necessarily want to own another expense. I, so I'm very adamant that we do some of that research. When somebody comes up and says that's the town dam, I'm like, wow.
The Goose Pond, they said the inundation zone below that dam is four hundred plus residences.
Yeah.
Which blew me away. Really, four hundred.
Well, and we've talked about the one by the mill quite a few times and the impact on downtown. And also upstream though, where if you were to lower it.
Oh, yeah.
A little bit, potentially.
Water zones and stuff.
Well, no, but even if you could safely lower it a small amount, you would actually take some of those businesses in our commercial that's certain out by the flood zone.
Yes, it's about fifteen inches.
Fifteen, oh, damn.
Would mean there's no flood plain.
But that flood plain, I think, is really kind of, um, defined by the railroad.
Right.
Cause.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I wonder about lowering the Baltic Mill Dam, how that would affect FEMA with the flood zone.
Well, I've, I.
Yeah, I don't think they would, class.
We'd have to do a lot of lobbying, uh, because right now, even around Massoma Lake, when you're up high, like, we're talking way up high and everybody in there and is dead. They still have, FEMA still has people in flood zones. You have to lobby, comfort, yeah.
Yeah, but it has been a real sort of, I'll say a drag or sea anchor on, land on Route Four, which is serviced by Sewer and Water, that has limitations because of the flood maps.
Right.
Particularly the old, uh, Raphael's Caccina site.
Right.
Uh, Bill Warren's place, Stacks Warren.
Yeah.
There's two or three spots down there that are just kind of like, we would love to see something happen, but every time they look at them.
Yeah, but it's also, um, it's an area that, and, and it's, it's an original natural state. It was probably very wet.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Right, yeah, I mean, excuse me, had it been left that way. But of course, at the time, who wants to build on the hillside when you can build in the flat land?
Yeah.
Less Lebanon, that's.
Yeah, we would have had a much better watershed for the town's water supplies at that point, yes. I've always felt like that's too bad that that first building went in there, but.
Right. Yeah, we actually have one of our best producing well in that zone, but it also is porous quality.
Yeah, that's the uranium.
Yes, yes, a nuclear isotope that's, the more you pull out of that well, the more that it's, where you get, throws up on the test.
Does that have a blinking light on a post above it? Is it, is it the one like behind Raphael's?
Yes, yes. There, I think there's a light there, to make sure that the pump's working.
Padling back there one day and the leaves weren't there and I went, whoa.
What's an L and landing tower?
And sometimes they open up the well and just let it go to try to flush it out and see what happens, but.
Yeah, it's not looking good on that one.
Yeah.
Okay, David, can you give us an update on Master Plant and Task Force?
Sure, um, not really an awful lot to tell everybody. At our previous meeting, um, I took a lot of comments from planning board members. And, um, I went over them with my co-chair Lindsay and with Brandy, our consultant. And we basically turned Brandy loose on polishing up, the draft and incorporating the many comments that we've received from focus groups and from, uh, the planning board. The timetable is that, uh, sometime during late July or early August, uh, she will have all of that done and we will widely advertise another public meeting. Uh, we'll be doing the lawn signs again and we will have mailing to all box holders. And hopefully, we will be able to have this public meeting while, um, the majority of the seasonal residents are still here. After that meeting, hopefully there will be only some minor tweaks. And then we will go through the official planning board public hearing process. And we will then, as a planning board, be able to adopt it. Uh, the Master Plant Task Force basically is sitting back for a month or two while Brandy does her work. And, um, we should see a, a close to finished product with all of the bells and whistles, uh, sometime in mid to late July. And that's about it.
Okay, thank you, David.
Yes, you got something? Well, just one comment on, yeah. I've been watching the, um, online videos of these different meetings. And, uh, when I was watching the master, the most recent master plan video, um, listening to the back and forth discussion, so it was, it started to occur to me, there was a very long discussion on the village here. What people were calling the village area, how to define it, how to put boundaries around it. And what do you do with Enfield Center? What do you call that? And it just went, um, everybody was just throwing out ideas and comments. But it never really came to a, what I could see any real consensus, um, on what to describe it and how to define it. And it occurred to me that part of the, to me, one of the biggest problems we're having is that Enfield never had a traditional downtown village. Ask where, where most New England towns, or a lot of other New England towns have. You look at Hanover, you have your main street and you have a green. Lebanon has the green and the, and the buildings around it. Uh, we don't have a green area like that, where the stores and large homes circling it. Um, Hughes Park is off to the side. It's at the edge of, you know, what we call the village here, what we call the village area. And we don't, and the main streets, what we call main street is not eight main street. Like other towns have main street lines with businesses on both sides and the brick buildings. So I think, if we can maybe get away from trying to say, this is the village and we want businesses in our village, that aren't going to be there for the last, they left and they're not coming back. Um, the post office left before I moved the town thirty years ago. There used to be a hardware store down there, which was gone before I moved here.
Yeah.
And the few businesses are in and out of the Copeland Block. And the only, and the down, the bottom floor one is constantly rotating through and it was vacant for a number of years. Um, and there's no parking. To speak, that people can find easily. There's no defined parking area either. So, I just think it would make a lot of sense to just rethink. Give it a different term. Give that, where the water sewer lines go, give it a different term. Don't call it a village. And call it the, I don't know what to call it, not, at least not a, uh, commercial village space, because it's not. Uh, you can call it your downtown walking area or something, or some other term. It's tied, it's tied into New Park, Massoma Park, and to Hughes Park. Try to come up with some other concept na- name to define that area. And what you really, what's gonna go there. But you can want all you want, but unless someone puts the business there, it doesn't happen. You can zone it all you want and it sits vacant, which is what's been happening.
I sit on the branding committee, um, and there's a lot of discussion about, um, the future of Enfields and what, what we identify as and how we merge our history with what our future is looking like, which is probably recreation based. Um, and I, so I would suggest that folks, um, have a chat with Ed, our town manager, about, you know, how that's going and what he sees. He has a lot of background in large projects, bringing businesses in, connecting different, you know, subset groups. So I'm not saying we're gonna be looking for a large business or employer, but I'm saying there, there are possible businesses to go in down there, um, you know, uh, as, um, in full disclosure, my family owned the Copeland Block, so I know a little bit about it. Um, and, you know, we've had a soda fountain, we've had a pharmacy, we've had an auto parts store, we had a doctor in town. So there are things, there are opportunities. Um, I, I don't know what the future looks like. I don't pretend to. But I, I think, you know, we have some opportunity here where we are also a summer community to look at something, um, creative. Uh, there's a lot of funding floating around right now, so something, naming it something that is inclusive, I think, would be in our best interest.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, all those things you listed were over thirty years ago.
Oh, yeah.
So, so I mean, just, you know, just time has changed.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And everything's car based.
I did list the triangle store.
Right, yeah, which I, I never even heard of.
Or the grain store.
Or the grain store, oh.
The grain store, which is right up against the rail.
Right, yeah, because my parents made me get my own grain with my red wagon and carry it.
So.
Yeah, and then, you know, the fact that it's, it's car based. And if people can't park, see a sign saying park here and have a space there. Um, and then go into. Um, and then go into whatever building the store was at.
I mean, the.
Which is, which is also preventing, cause there's no traffic. That's, all the traffic is on Route four. So any business looking at, okay, where are my customers? How are they gonna see my storefronts?
Well, and some of it is marketing and having people like in Hanover and Lebanon, you don't get to park in front of the store, right? So just teaching people, and there is a parking group that I've spent some time, but I think some of that is going to. Uh, evolve as we decide the fate of some of these downtown spaces. So, you know, there's, there are people who are interested in potentially investing. The investment might look like a multi-level parking garage with different opportunities. So there are definitely folks who are having those conversations and, um, but, you know. Are we making a walkable downtown? Are we also encouraging people to walk? We haven't yet, could we? Absolutely. We have town land that we could be connecting, um, and I think that we really need to think about our heritage and our rural nature. And, and making, making it so that people can walk, um, also and park, right?
Something comes to mind when, and I hear what you're saying, Kurt, is that, um, the word village is, is quite commonly. Think known in, in the community about when you say the village of Enfield, everyone knows what you're talking about. Not confusing that with Enfield Center or any other place in town. So I'm not sure that forcing a term that would be confusing. Is really necessary, because we don't really have to compare ourselves to any other village, typical New England, New England village. So I'm, I'm not so sure the term isn't. Isn't inappropriate. I, I, I think it, it's just what it's come to be known. Um, what I hope we do is that the. Master plan and whatever results from that in terms of zoning and regulations. Are set up in a way that, that enables creative. Investors and people who have ideas and want to implement things can do those and they're not constrained by what. We might want to see, but turns out with unintended consequences.
Um, I'm just curious, um, because I grew up here and I lived downtown and I, so I've never said village. And the only time I ever hear village is when I'm in a meeting with folks, um, who maybe, you know, arrived here later and. Um, it's interesting, cause I don't think of Enfields after growing up here. I don't think of Enfield as a village at all. Um.
It's downtown, right?
I call, and so when someone's like, yo Kate, where are you right now? I'm like, hey, I'm downtown.
Downtown.
Or I'm coming from downtown. Um, and I always joke, I'm like, I'm in downtown metropolitan Enfield, you know? But I, so it's, um, it's downtown to me and I, I never really put a lot of thought into it being a village. Until I got more involved in town items. So it's, it's just interesting to hear everybody talking, how people formulate their thoughts about.
Yeah, I mean, that's, uh, you know, I mean, like you're saying, people that live here call it the village, but if you've.
We're downtown.
That, well, so I, I'm from here and I've never called it the village. I don't think I've ever.
But if someone who's never been to Enfield, you say, meet me at the Enfield Village.
We shouldn't even get people to say village school. They all think it's elementary.
Well, you're gonna, they're gonna say at Mickey's or at.
Right, so that's, that's my thing. I mean, that's, that's part of my problem, Harry. Now, now to us, what we're calling, the commercial village is main street. It's labeled main street and it goes from the bridge, oh, actually, the far side of the bridge, Route four A. The bridge is part of main street.
Right.
Um, on paper.
To Hughes.
To, to Route four A, uh, four A to Route four.
Right.
So if maybe we think of as developing main streets. And then people will say, oh, where's main street? Let's go find it.
And we have an opportunity as the ten year plan comes through, uh, take on Rob for a minute, because the ten year plan likes to hop. It's a way out when we talk about the ten year plan for, uh, roadways and dealing with D O T. Nice folks, very busy. And, um, but getting people, getting signage, getting turn offs. Getting, splitting some of those lanes where we might naturally as residents, like you go straight, you go here, everybody else sneaks by on the right. Getting some of those traffic flows handled and then really routing people in such a way that they are in teist. Like perhaps you go down Oak Grove and getting them down onto, on the street and tying things together. We also have an opportunity with the public safety building to have more of an entrance to the defined commercial business district. So I think there are some things, some opportunities here where as we look at our very near future. To align ourselves with the idea that we can be tying things together, you know? We have on the four A side of town, we have that nice sign that's near the beach parking lot that kind of routes people to different businesses. We don't have anything like that in downtown, so just being open to some creative ways to get people, you know, invited into Enfield to spend some time. So I always feel my goal is to get people to come to Enfield and leave their money here, right? And, 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 and how do we do that?
I see. I'm guessing everyone's had, has read some of the drafts or maybe all the drafts of the master plan.
You need to speak up when that fan comes.
The dreaded fan.
Okay, um, so I'm, I'm, I'm curious and, and we don't have to talk about this now, but it's, it's a curiosity of mine. Uh, at that moment. Uh, after having sat through two of the focus groups and then read the other sections. And then I'm looking at our current zoning ordinance. I'm thinking, gosh, these are, these are like one hundred eighty degrees out from all of them.
Exactly, yep, yeah.
Are we sort of leaning that way too? So the zoning ordinance has got to need some adjustments.
It's thirty years old and it's what people, it's, it's what people wanted the town to be thirty years ago and.
There was some aspirational thinking.
Yeah. Personally, as somebody who did not grow up here, I always consider Enfield as a bedroom town. And.
Probably always ever, always will be.
It always will be and. I don't see ways you get people from Lebanon and Hanover to come to Enfield and go downtown. Quote. You may get them for recreational purposes, but I don't see getting them there for shopping purposes. I mean, this, I guess from my point of view, what was the old pharmacy or.
Yeah.
Hardware store. The ideal, the ideal business was there and they left. Which was the architectural. Um, that's the type of business you should be getting down there, because you don't have, you're right, you don't have parking. So you want something that doesn't, is not catering to customers. You're looking to get, use those buildings for low impact business, I guess I would say.
Offices.
Offices, yeah. I mean, the idea was right. Yeah, you put retail on the first floor and you, everything above that is residential. But you can't make people do that.
Well, I'm, I'm, uh, encouraged by. You're not in, in rewriting.
Yeah.
I didn't wanna use that, cause I really don't know where folks are thinking about this, but. Um, so the, the real reason I brought that up is we've got a master plan hopefully going to be adopted and. Say, uh, David, uh, mid fall, is that sort of the goal?
Um, ho- hopefully, hopefully late summer, early fall would be my hope.
Can you hear me?
I'm sorry.
Right here. Happens right here. It doesn't have to have a town meeting.
But we, but we wanna have.
Right. We wanna. We wanna have public input.
Yeah, we wanna feel like we're really adopting something that's happened.
Right.
So. So all the things that the current zoning ordinance is hindering or will continue to hinder.
How much you changing?
And so we changed the zoning ordinance.
I mean, you can't build a duplex.
Right.
It's not in the, no place can you build a duplex.
One of the things we did was we spot zoned.
So we spot book zone where the Shep Street is.
As a trial and I think, you know, that, um, there is, there's a draft R F P for that. And obvious, and it's a, it, it, it's a draft, so it needs more work. And certainly, if you haven't seen, I'd love to see your input. Um, that will go out from the select board and the town manager's office. But I think that is one of those pieces where if we try it and it's something acceptable, then we could be expanding on that idea. Focusing development in the downtown area and maybe to a slightly more dense state.
Okay, so, uh, and that is good, that is good. So I, I hope we've got something, something available for town meeting. Advance.
Right.
The, the, the general idea that we wanna, we wanna have, um, the ability for. People with money, whether you're a developer or just a property owner, wanting to do something with your own business, that you can actually begin to do things.
Yeah.
What, and, and clearly we can rewrite the zoning ordinance in a matter of a few months. I don't think we really can even start that until the master plan is done.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So, um, and it seems to be that in the next year, next calendar year will be when. Is that not?
That's when you, that's when you, you focus on your zone.
And we had some really good discussions too, I feel, here about the areas that were zoned with kind of what I said was the aspirational thinking where it was like. Ideally for the lake, we wish it would have X, Y, Z. Um, so, but no one's going tearing down five-way houses to make a good point, right?
Yeah.
So, and we know that's never gonna happen. That's why I say it's aspirational thinking. And I don't think it came from a place of harm. I think it came from a place of preservation and, and good. But we need to be more realistic about what we expect, because that's triggering so many reviews and Rob continues.
The ideal.
It's a poor use of.
The ideal one is Crystal Lake. Around Crystal Lake is R three.
You want a doghouse dormer?
Right. Anytime, so that the entire developments on the backside are all non-conforming lots. Because the homeowners association there said you have to have a minimum of three quarters of an acre. And that's what everything was built and then when zoning came in, they made it R three.
And we tried to, they tried to overlay it.
So we probably wanna be, and I'm sure the committee who's working on the master plan is considering this. Not terribly prescriptive, but more in general terms, this is what we wanna see, because.
Right.
The details will come as rewrite the zoning ordinance, right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, Tim, ba- basically, the, the, um, the plan is an overview. And from the master plan will flow a rewrite of the zoning ordinance. And my guess is that will be done probably in the twenty-three, twenty-four timeframe. Just given the way things work. So there's gonna be a little bit of lag between adopting the master plan. And a total rewrite of the zoning. But, you know, I'd like to see it done with the help of a professional planner. And I'd be lobbying for, um, the, for Brandy Saxton. Who has been our planner for the master plan. Uh, cause she's already up to speed and, and, and running. And, you know, certainly there are other planners in the area that could do, uh, do a job, uh, as well. But I, I think a total rewrite of the zoning ordinance is probably. More than the planning board, uh, can or should be biting off. So we're, we're definitely gonna need some, uh, professional assistance. And I, I think Rob, in one conversation that you and I had, uh, within the last couple of months. You had indicated that there is grant money available if your zoning rewrite. Is gonna impact housing. Uh, is that correct, Rob?
That's true. Plan to answer.
Yep.
Yep.
And when do we apply for that funding? Uh, when we wanna, when we wanna start rewriting the zoning ordinance.
Hopefully this fall.
Well, I, I would, I would like to suggest that we establish a goal. The town meeting of twenty-four to have a rewritten zoning ordinance for approval.
It can make a suggestion, just because when these go, this is, these are very hard for people when they go to vote. Um, it, it, no matter how you slice it, right? Cause you have the strikeouts and then you have the new languages. It becomes very long. So we just did a really, a nice job, I think, on Kurt really led it on doing the lighting piece. So how do we make this so it's digestible? Because even if you do a great job showing people upfront, they get this ballot, right? And it's.
See, I fully, we have to go through the lawyer, but I believe if they use a page one to page X rewrites.
Can we give them?
You just say, old ones out.
We're striking, we're striking all of this and we're replacing.
A complete rewrite.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I.
That's correct.
I just wanna, people, that's a piece of feedback I often get as a select board member. Um, and I think it's fair, right? And none of us knew all of this language before we started doing it. So making things that they're not, I know not everything can be in totally plain English, but making it available so that people. Because people do try to help themselves. Sometimes they just can't.
Yeah, it's, it's a quirk of the R S A's.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
You know, I came in here all fired up about Article four, when I got actually to the ballot and was looking at, I had no idea what those others on it. The changes were about, I couldn't, I didn't understand them at all. And, and I imagine everyone felt, felt that way. But, but yeah, I, I, that's the way we need to do that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, anyway, um, it's, is, is that something? Uh, the board, planning board might wanna think about as a goal and sort of establish that, that what we're shooting for the. Fall of twenty, uh, twenty-three to have this thing finished and it's ambitious, but with, uh. Rob's magic working with grants and, and some professional help. And hopefully the zoning ordinance, instead of that thick, is, you know, much thinner.
One thing we do have to do is finish the master plan, because we only did a few sections. And we haven't done all the sections yet, so that's not concluded.
I think that we could probably do the sections like the recreation in parallel. Um, and, and have multiple teams working on it.
And energy and heritage.
Right, yeah, because that would affect.
We, we, we took up the two required, uh, sections that are required by the state. And we looked at all of the options and we decided the most important ones for the future of the town. Uh, were housing, transportation, economic development. And that's how we chose, uh, where to, where to focus on. And I, I believe that we can come up with a good zoning ordinance rewrite. With the information that we have now and with, um, you know, if we work in parallel. As, as Kate says, with recreation and energy and heritage. Um, you know, I, I, I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time, as they say.
Provided that people pitch in, because I do wanna call attention to the fact that we are. Lightly taxing our employees on multiple other levels, so I just wanna make sure, um, that we are being fair to everybody professionally. Because good help is hard to find and I don't wanna drive anybody away running. I'm not suggesting that anyone's applied that. But I do wanna make sure we are a lot of people and so that we're contributing in a meaningful way. So that we're not adding huge expectations, um, when we already have a pretty steep workload.
And on, but on the zoning side, if you go with David's thing of getting a professional planner, like Br- Brandy in here. Then that takes work off of Rob's, it takes work off of.
Yes.
Other town employees.
And I think you guys struck a nice, very nice.
And I'm sure the Heritage Commission would wanna have input into the Heritage Chapter. And the Energy Commission Committee would wanna have input into the energy package. And the natural resources.
The, the Energy, um, Committee has actually came up with a master plan chapter several years ago.
Right.
And, you know, the, these committees are already up to speed on what the issues are and where the. And where the town should be going on them. So the 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 next chapters are gonna be real easy. Because we have many hands that have already started the work.
Okay, I'm ready with um. Tim, sorry, I do a complete blank. Uh that once the master plan is adopted, it would just make sense to move right into.
Yeah.
Uh looking at your major, your your big picture zoning changes. Uh like the leak, the land use and other housing and just continue right through because. If you wait six months, then you'll sort of like you lose all your momentum and then town meetings, you have nothing to present to town meeting. To talk about and say, this is where we're going. Please be aware, you know, come to our meetings type of thing.
We all know the stakeholders who are counting on us to do this. We have people that have property that want to do something with it.
Yeah.
The investment potentials. We've got people that uh want to hopefully get some affordable housing in here. There's a number of. Different interests like that that are counting on us to get this done.
I would like to go back to the board with a proposal if it would be okay with you guys, because I think this is a really great conversation. Um I would like to propose to the select board that we go back to each committee and ask them for two things um as an agenda item, a continuous improvement. Um kind of list and a goal, a set of goals, so that we, each committee tells us what they're actively doing. And not to make, not for us not to be assigning goals out, but for those to come back, because I think this exercise that's kicking off right now is fantastic. And I think these are the kind of things we need to be doing as a community to not lose this momentum. So if we were to actively at reorganization each year, charge each committee with. You know, continuous and planned activities. Um and those are the small, realizable activities. It sounds like that you're just gonna continually do. And then the larger goals and say, you know, maybe produce a set of, and it doesn't have to be, but say, one to five goals. Um it should not go above five, in my opinion, because you lose, and and that generally in companies you don't. Would you feel comfortable? Is that a piece of? Would would you guys want to engage in that kind of project uh process? Where we're measuring ourselves and putting timelines?
Certainly would. I I think we've just talked about.
Right.
Yeah, I I I just want to make sure I'm going back with.
Because we could, we could have a master plan ready maybe in the fall. And that doesn't mean we can't start working on the zoning changes. We don't have to wait till next town meeting.
No, no, you have to have something in writing.
You have to have something in writing and we've got, we would have a master plan in writing, which somewhat gives you your goals. Because you you basically said this is what the town wants to do in the future and you could start rewriting. Here's it would be for approval in twenty-four.
Right.
But you can start before town meeting in twenty-three.
Oh, yeah, it would take over a year.
It's gonna take a good fifteen to eighteen months.
Well, it's.
Yeah. Yeah.
We've got about eighteen.
We've got about eighteen months from.
And there's a lot of federal dollars out there that could be incorporated into some of these large projects. I just sat in the meeting this afternoon with. We would have been redistricted and with um Cindy Cindy Wilmington is now our executive counselor, when redistricting happened, Enfield. Got re-clumped. And so and she's talking about a lot of these things that are coming to the table and how she's connecting with communities. Um. Claremont was there, Lebanon was there, and so it was with some representation at the table talking about these projects. And it their focus have other focuses, but I said Enfield is, we know we're a veteran community, right? And we have specific ties for employment with them and expectations of our relationship. But leveraging these relationships and making sure that we're getting in front of who we need to get to get this funding. Tied into these projects in Enfield so we can do these things and 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 definitely time is of the essence in that case.
Yeah, because the federal dollars run up twenty-five.
Exactly, so it's, I think you did.
What could actually happen is if people don't spend the money, it still has to be spent, which means they may. Take all the excess that wasn't spent and say in the next twelve months uh through twenty-six. X number of dollars and they may give it to us by, they may give it by state or they may just, they come in with grants.
And there are projects in this area that have identified how much housing we need in each town, so you know, also setting some goals based around that, like. Can we realize getting X number of like projects in front of this board right here?
Right.
You know, does that become a goal? And giving Rob more work getting them here.
And the other, the other one, which comes back to the density issue of what do you want for workforce housing is. The board that the state set up, so that you don't go directly to court, they basically have said, don't say you want workforce housing. And then zone it so people can't afford to build workforce housing.
Yeah.
Because they did that in a case in Platte, in uh Pelham. Where the Pelham basically kicked out the site plan because. They said it doesn't doesn't meet the zoning and they came back and said, wait a minute. They they basically are making thirty-five percent of it workforce housing.
Yeah.
You've got to give them a break on the zoning piece because if you're gonna have affordable housing. Affordable housing doesn't mean the developer loses money on doing the plan. So I think that's where we can be very helpful with our zoning ordinances to. Give people breaks if they do do affordable housing. And say, you don't have to meet this, this and this because it is affordable housing. You can maybe have an extra four units. On that size lot. And that could be a part of a zoning change where we're saying in our master plan, we want more affordable and workforce housing. So our zoning then changes the ordinance to reflect that. And that could be, you know, one of the, one of the ways of doing that.
Well, it's gonna be an interesting.
Yeah.
We've got a lot of smart people in this town and we just have to put everybody's brain to work. We're gonna, we're gonna get stuff done.
And it's a time to do. You know, we've been saying for fifteen years, the zoning ordinances are antiquated. So then we change two or we change three.
Right, right.
Rather than having a goal and saying, let's build it, let's build our zoning to what we said we wanted to do. So that somebody on Crystal Lake doesn't have to come in for a variance because he wants to move his line. Because his line's on this side of the brook and he wants to put it in the in the middle of the brook. So his neighbor isn't come, doesn't have to come across to cut their grass because it's on the other side of the brook. So he has to go in and get a variance from the the uh.
That's why David was talking about, we need probably more zones, you know, either Crystal Lake zone and we need a Crystal Lake zone.
Yeah.
And then just grandfather all that stuff into the zoning laws.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. Just write the regs to match what's on the ground right now.
Right, exactly. Okay, good discussion.
I love it.
Heavy old business. Oh, yeah, we still got some old too, because we still need to have a member appointed, right?
Say that again.
We need to have a a planning board member ap- appointed for Eric's seat. Because you're now a alternate, right? Tim, Tim took his seat, which means we've got an empty seat in Eric's.
Um I don't know if we have any volunteers to pull out the form, but did you?
David and I have talked about at least one or two members of the master planning task force might be good. And we've pitched it to at least one of them. So far, she's somewhat interested.
Have you pitched it to the other one?
No.
Okay.
We will have to pitch harder. We'll pitch harder.
All right. Would you want to pitch to Brad, seeing as he lives in town now? He's one of twelve months, twelve months a year.
And Ashley Wood was the other.
Okay, yeah. He grew up in town and he's back from Massachusetts and living here full time.
Yeah, two good names right there. And if we swing and miss on both of those, we'll take your list from the.
Yes, exactly.
There really were some incredible people.
Yeah.
Um and names that we haven't seen as often. Another, a great place to look for folks is at the Business Cafe that Eva runs.
Yeah.
Um because there are folks here who show up and we just need to keep asking folks to join because not everybody realizes. That someone would welcome them because they've never done it before, so.
So we're looking for one additional?
Yeah, because we're looking for, because Eric uh.
Russell.
Eric Russell is now on the select board and Kate's still the member here, so.
I would say, um I will pick on Eric for two seconds and say Eric was probably our resident feminist and he is often the one in the room who reminded me. That I was underrepresented and I didn't always remember that. So I would also encourage people to think a little bit about giving more. People who have either different viewpoints or women, a seat at the table, just because of how we think differently and I. Always welcome input from other people.
We did that for a long time because we had two female select board.
Not personal.
Do I even count? I'm like a pig farmer. It's a whole different job. I'm just trying to be open to that kind of, uh because Eric is usually the one who reminds me and I'm like, oh, right, I'm all alone.
Well, that's why, that's why the the two of them, I agree, both of them would be good additions.
Yeah.
So how many alternates then are we allowed?
We're allowed as many as we want.
Typically, we had like three anyway.
We used to, yeah.
So I'm an alternate.
And Jim's an alternate.
So we still have.
Whitney's an alternate.
That's right.
Whitney's an alternate.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
Um well, if 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 we have two people that you think, and I don't know them, but I'd certainly be willing to. You know, meet someone and go for coffee and talk about it and that sort of thing is maybe how you get people to sign up.
Yeah.
I know about that.
Any new business?
Well, well, what I was gonna say, I'm an alternate, so I'm officially an alternate because I signed the paperwork. And I'm also not gonna be in town the month of June, so I'll be missing those meetings.
Okay, you headed out?
Yeah.
Good. Gonna have a good time. Next meeting appears to be June eighth. I will accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All favor. Bye, David. Bye, David.
Bye.
Rest of the month and I'll see you June eighth and.
Before you all leave.
You, I'll see you tomorrow.
Who am I seeing tomorrow? What?